Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add an item to the agenda for the appointment of a town health officer.
And we're fine with that? If so, we will add that, we will add it to just after public comment for item number four. Just trying to figure out how to raise my chair.
Moment of silence for Tim's chairs. Would you like my chair, Mr. Mayor?
Feeling a little, uh, little small here, but we'll get used to it. Did you do that on purpose?
Kate, stand up, please, straight.
Did Chad do that while I was gone?
Kate, you want to swap? There's a lot of levers.
That child through sports. Yeah, you did it on purpose, did you? Thank you all for coming, thank you staff for being here, Marty, thanks for making time to get off the roads. Appreciate that, so is there any public comment on any non-agenda items?
Tom?
Tom, you're good, any questions?
Which Tom? This Tom?
This Tom, yeah.
No, none.
You're good, okay. Thank you for coming tonight. Actually, we will recess.
No.
Oh, no, thank you, Chad. We amended the agenda to talk about the health officer. Chad, you want to go ahead?
Yep, so every three years, we have to do an appointment for the town health officer, or it falls on me. And I don't want it to fall on me, so in the past, we've had Matt Mulhern as the town health officer and Kiery as a deputy. So I guess I would like to make the motion that we continue that for the next three years.
Second.
Motion is second, any questions, comments, hearing on all of those, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So Matt and Chief are renewed in their positions as health officers.
Can you make that happen, Curry?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chad. Now we will recess from the State Council and convene the Liquor Control Commission. Curry, if you want to come on up. Thank you for coming in tonight.
Oh, sure, happy to be here. Tonight, we just, we have an education regulation violation, 14 Star Brewing. The folks over there were going to have somebody come over, but due to the weather and their travel, they sent them home early. And the owner there is hosting an event, but I had communications with her today. Basically, it was a training violation. There was a survey, somebody was going in to check to see if they would be able to be sold underage liquor, and they passed that test, but they did notice at that time that their training violation, or their training certificate had expired. So on November 4th, their license was just suspended for that day. And then I was, she did send over to me a copy of the new first-class server training license that has been renewed. So if there is anything that I could be helpful with, kind of communicating over to the folks at 14 Star, I'd be happy to. And I'd be happy to test this around.
I just want to go through this again, after we've gotten talking. And the certification that you showed me was for Jill Trombley.
Right.
So Jill Trombley, if everyone looks on the first page of the liquor violation notice, on the compliance report, Jill Trombley was the trainer of Kelsey Shedrick, who was the actual employee who was serving. And it was Jill's certification that had expired, even though Chelsea was serving, but Chelsea was trained by Jill, so 14 Star got the violation. What was surprising to me was that Vermont took, the state took such a harsh position to actually suspend them for that, because she got the proper training, it was just from somebody whose training had expired. And this is the first time I've, like, I've seen.
Who was a certified trainer?
Was, but she hadn't re, got recertified, but it's the same materials, that's my understanding, because those materials haven't changed yet. They're going to, but they haven't yet, and it was, it's just a fluke that that happened that way. But it's, I suspect now that they're going to take a very tough position on all the violations, meaning that a violation, at the very least, which would be our D violations, are a one-day suspension, with no subjectivity involved, I mean, your violation is a one-day suspension.
Do you think, Tim, maybe they took a harsher stance because it's a brewery?
You know, to me, I would have, I would have gave a warning, because the training that the person received was the proper training, it was just from someone who just had not been certified yet, and, yeah.
So can we find out, like, I mean, if they were?
Curry's gonna call John.
I was gonna say, if they were, if they served alcohol to someone underage, what's that gonna be now? If this is this simple?
I mean, one thing that she did mention, that this Andrea, the CEO over there, said that they didn't realize that they could train or certify each other, so I wonder if that was something that they took as just a very blatant oversight, but that's just me speculating, but that they can train or certify each other now, they are assuring themselves.
And that's what they did, if you turn the page to this page, you'll see the training that the bartender received from Jill Trombley.
She just took the training?
It was out of, it was out of date, so, yeah. And it's very, that training stuff's very easy, you do it online, you can do it by, like Curry just explained, by the people who are already training, training somebody, and certified too, they have to be certified too.
I think it's important to add also that 14 Star takes this all serious, that they're a class act when it comes to this piece of this.
If you look at their extension report, this is it.
Yeah, that's the only one, just this one, honestly.
So tonight, we're fortunate enough to have in the audience the Chair of the Liquor Control Board on the state level, and he'd like to comment on this.
That's a statute, one-day suspension, so the agent doesn't have any variable?
Yeah, that's right, no subjectivity.
Had they appealed to the board, and come to the board, we would have probably looked at it differently and issued a warning, which we have done in the past, but we have just, the state has just hired an education director for DLC in Lottery, and they're looking at all their educational processes. One of the, one of the snap moves is, they have to go and get the training, and we're trying to do it so they can do it online, but there's gotta be some triggers in there that prevent just one person taking it at the establishment, for everybody in the establishment, so we're.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna, they're working through that, we're gonna have a better process in order for that education to be achieved, but if they appeal to the board, I think they would have.
It would have been, no, it's quite, well, it's harsh, that's good to hear, because I think there should be some flexibility there, given the.
But the age, that's statute, and that's what he has to issue.
Yeah.
And they, they did come to the board, this is the first I've heard about it, but they obviously just accepted the.
So to that point, Marty, how well-known is it that an entity has the option to appeal to the liquor?
They're told that, when they're issued the ticket, they're told that they can appeal, there's an appeal process, so.
Thank you for that information. Thanks, Curry, I think we've got approved minutes, and then we will.
Motion to approve, LCB meeting, minutes June 10.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, amendments? Hearing on, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, we got one aye. Everyone else enough? So any nays? Hearing on, motion passes to approve minutes of June 10.
July 17.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chad. Any questions, changes? Marie was absent.
I was saying I was absent.
Was absent.
So was I.
Kate was absent. Tim, were you here?
I was here.
Okay, Chad, were you here?
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Curry, I think, a night like this, if you want to head out, we are more than.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve the control back into City Council again.
Second.
Second by Chad, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll move on to item number six, I believe it would be now.
Five? Oh, yeah, new six.
New six, yeah. Financing administrative report with Tom Leitz. Please come on up, Tom.
Good evening.
Hello, how are you?
Good, good. So what you've got in front of you is a comprehensive set of financing documents for the federal loan portion of the wastewater upgrade. It's $7.17 million, and even though our line of credits are at great interest rate, I'm gonna probably, if I can't overnight this, I'll drive this up to St. Johnsberry to their office, because it's still a fair amount of money. So the great news is that in the last month, they lowered the interest rate from 2% to 1.75%, and in essence, they were under no obligation to do that, because the initial set of financing documents you approved over a year ago were at 2%, but they're trying to encourage folks to make investments like we have. And since we're one of the first movers, if not the first mover, on a major upgrade like this in recent years in the state, we get some benefit there. And along the same lines, we've had some conversations with the state in the past week, where they're once again telling us that there's some money on the table, and there's almost a lack of interest of municipalities, and so we don't have a lack of interest necessary, and we don't have a lack of financing fees on the water and wastewater side. So the fact that our partners assist us in this way is great. The other great piece of news that was not in the memo is, we're now into the final phase of the project from a financing perspective, and it's all federal grant, about $3 million of federal grant towards the end. As of the last week or so, we've got a few million dollars left in the project, and we've got about $350,000 remaining in the contingency. The manager and the council at the time had the foresight to write the bond question pretty broadly, and so even though we may not be able to spend that money directly at the plant, we can spend that money upstream in ways that benefit the system, so we're in this great enviable position of finding a way to spend a few hundred grand on the wastewater system in the next few months, maybe not spend it in the next few months, but at least obligate it and get a course of action, so the project is winding down, we're in a great position, we've got money left over. So it's, the plan came together, and went as it should.
When's the expected date for the project to be completed?
Right around Christmas.
Is that on schedule, beyond schedule?
It's, we were talking fall.
I thought.
Yeah, so maybe a month along the way, but it's.
It's left just a little.
So now that we have this little bit of extra funding, this past storm that we had on October 31st, that place was pretty much underwater. Is there any way that we can stop that from happening, so we don't have three or four, however many guys it was, out there trying to save the plant from going underwater?
Perhaps, I think the lower hanging fruit is the CSO. That's where I thought you were going. That was in rough shape on that day as well, so. I mean, I don't think the surplus is gonna be enough to fix that whole thing, I think we had more a magnitude of a million or so there. Both got extra capacity in the bond warning, so we don't have to go back to the voters, it's just a question of finalizing the plants and issuing the debt, if we can work on finance committee, we'll be able to buy it.
Yeah, and I'll just say that because of the advocates around the CSO discharge issues, I had people sending me emails and got a couple of calls from folks who are concerned about the discharges, not really understanding the percentage of that that is rainwater. But, I mean, I'm curious, if we could, if we had, if money was no object, what would it take to not have those CSO discharges? Because that's, that was the thing, it's like, I know it's a lot of money to separate the system and modernize it, but what would it take to do that?
You'd have to entirely separate the entire system, and then all your storm water, all the time, would be even more untreated, so your MSW compliance would be worse. So you'd be spending tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars. And from an engineering perspective, you'd generally speaking, you don't pump storm water, because you can't plan for it, you can't right-size the pump, and so that's what they've got going against us, it's gravity. I'm not even sure if it's possible, honestly, but as soon as it was, we'd be spending, you know, 50, 60 million, and they have a huge problem to resolve over here with their MSW compliance.
That's what I wanted to be able to take back.
Yeah.
Particularly, one of my friends who keeps saying, "Why do we keep doing this, why don't we, why don't we fix this?" And it's because it's an enormous investment, right?
That causes other problems.
Well, that storm water is being treated at one point, right?
Yeah. Marty, can you speak to this?
The, if money was no object, the solution would be building a couple more plants. That's obviously not feasible.
Can you also touch on?
So the water that is going through the plant, that goes through overflow, does get treated, a primary treatment, but it doesn't get the full treatment that the normal two and a half billion to three million gallons a day that we treat. That, the situation that happened that day, we got almost five inches of rain within about a five and a half hour period, and it was just inundated, and the plant sits at the lowest part of the system and just couldn't keep up, it was just overloaded. Same thing that happened on, we had three different overflows on Lower Weldon at that CSO, and it was just, it just couldn't keep up with it. The diversion canal was, you know, had its max, but that's all separated, and that's typically storm water runoff, road runoff, and everything, but there's so many areas throughout the system that aren't separated, that are being fed into the plant, that you're treating like it is raw sewage, that, like Dom said, if you could separate everything to the fullest, that would be good, but then you're introducing another problem on the other side.
Thanks. Good. Can you touch on the amounts you shared with me, relative to the amount of gallons?
We typically do, like I said, two and a half, three million gallons a day. I think we're licensed for eight. In those, that two-day period, we're over 50 million gallons.
That was full treatment? So you treated?
Total flow. Total flow.
Total flow, right.
Thank you, Marty. So, Tom, you're looking for a move to sign bond financing documents?
Yes, I was around, and I'll get signatures tonight.
So entertain a motion.
A move to authorize the mayor, clerk, and treasurer to sign the bond financing documents for $7,717,000 in public sewer system bonds at a 1.75% interest rate over 30 years, as outlined in the bond finance documents.
The motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Marie, any questions for Tom, comments? Hearing on, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? No opposition, motion passes. Do you have the documents, Tom?
I got one here, Tom. Most of it, Curry, Tim, there's one for you, if there are no counts of interest, it's just the mayor and treasurer.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Can I, oh, never mind. So we'll move on to new item number seven. I'd like to welcome Jeff Carr with Economic and Policy Resources to talk about the local option tax. Jeff, if you want to sit there.
Short-term interest rate cuts by the Federal Reserve are wonderful things, except, we're trying to get a new CD. That may sting. If you're a borrower, it's great, if you're a saver, it stinks.
Will we move here, Chrisman?
I have a beautiful picture of a museum, looks like a screensaver. Do I need to do anything to wake this puppy up?
Oh, it's like your.
So, yeah.
Yeah, that's the St. Albans Museum.
Which, I'm an economist, so I have a PowerPoint, it's an occupational hazard, maybe you'd want to see that instead of, instead of the PowerPoint.
So Jeff, I will turn it over to you.
I'm delighted to be here, I would have preferred it had been last Monday night for driving up from Burlington, but it is what it is, and it's winter.
Not yet.
Way too early.
Yeah.
Not yet.
I haven't had my, I haven't put my golf clubs away yet, because I'm hoping it's gonna melt, and then we'll have a couple, at least a weekend before Thanksgiving. I'm here to talk to you about the possibility of a local option tax. Okay, so the arrow's not working, so you want me to enter, advance? Okay, so this is the way I'm gonna advance. And I'm here to discuss the question, as it was posed to me, shall the City Council of St. Albans request approval from the General Assembly of a charter change to enact a 1% local option sales and use tax within the city of St. Albans, and/or a 1% local option meals and rooms and alcohol tax, to be administered by the state of Vermont? And all those words have meanings. When I first was asked to look at this, to see whether or not a local option tax could be something that the City Council could consider, I didn't know you already had the authority to do one, until I went back and, until I looked at the city charter, and then I discovered that you can impose an entertainment tax on things like bowling alleys and all that kind of thing, that you already had the authority to do that, and actually, the city of Rutland and the city of Burlington also have the authority to do that, but they administer it themselves. The thought process here is, should you elect to go further to investigate it, is that we would take advantage of the local option tax, which would be administered by the state of Vermont, piggyback to that, so that you wouldn't have to have the enforcement mechanism and staff it internally to do it. They're very good at administering taxes, okay? You guys are good at doing things like revitalizing the downtown, making infrastructure investment decisions, and amenity investment decisions, and those kinds of things, so the thought process is, divide and conquer, and do the things that each one of the involved governmental entities don't do well. When the state administers taxes well, you handle local decision-making better than the state. So that was the thought process that went into this. To do a local option tax requires a charter change. It has to be approved by the Vermont General Assembly, because of the way we organize ourselves as a, as a state. And so I was asked to come in to kind of give you some background on it, to answer any questions that you have. And if you want me to go further to investigate this, to give you more facts, with the idea that you might be able to come to a decision and maybe even have a vote this town meeting day, you can tell me to stop now, or tell me to bring you more information, because there is some more information that's needed. I'm gonna give you some rough numbers later on, but those have to be refined. The Vermont Department of Taxes is willing to take a list from us of businesses that might be covered by each one of these options, and compare it to the list as they reported on their website, the receipts and assessments of the state income, the state sales and use meals, rooms, and alcohol tax on businesses in the city. The possible disconnect is, the businesses that are located in the city versus in the town, basically, is an artifact of an analyst sitting in Montpelier, who thinks that he or she understands where the location of the business is, because you have identical zip codes, so it's hard to differentiate between the two. So we've worked with town staff, we've got a list of those businesses that we think may be subject to this tax, and so before we send that to Montpelier, and they go and assign somebody the task of sorting through that list of businesses and undertaking that effort, I thought at least I would come and talk to you about it, and take your temperature about whether or not you want us to ask them to do that, because that's a considerable amount of effort to do that. But that's really the only way to get a solid idea about how much these local tax options might raise, if you're to move forward. So that's the reason that I'm here. I come to you as a recovering locally-elected official myself. I've spent 10 years on my town select board in the town of Essex. About five years as vice chair, and one year as chair, which I'm trying to repress from my memory. And so I come to you from that perspective, looking at it from the standpoint of, if I was sitting in your seat, what are the types of things that I would want to understand and know before I turn somebody loose to get some more information, to the point where it might come to a decision point where you give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. The local option tax of 1% under state law can be added to alcoholic beverages, meals tax, rooms tax, and the sales tax. Notice in the sales tax, I dropped deliberately use tax. The state's tax is actually a sales and use tax, you know, when you go buy a piece of electronics in the state of New Hampshire, and you don't have to pay a sales tax, when you bring that over the line, you're supposed to write your check to state government. I think two or three people might actually do that in the state when that happens. But the use tax is, I do it because of my other position in my other life, where I do tax revenues for the state of Vermont, I've been doing it for 30 years, so I always do that if I do that. But the use tax is expressly excluded from a local option tax, there'll be, there's no local use tax. The other thing that is a sales tax-like assessment is, we don't include the motor vehicle purchase and use tax in the local option tax as part of the sales tax, because that technically is a fund source that's assessed on the price of your car up to a certain limit, but that goes to fund the state transportation funds, not in the general fund. So that's deliberately excluded from this tax source. Now, as I said earlier, it's a little confusing about who does what, because City of Burlington and City of Rutland both have the authority to administer and collect their own local option sales tax, and their own local option meals, rooms, and alcohol tax. It's not done by the tax department, so I will, I have a typo in here, because I got a little confused by that when I was doing it this weekend, doing the PowerPoint too, and I miscounted. And then the city, as I said earlier, currently has the option, a local option tax on liquor that collects a few dollars, I don't have done that, how much was it?
Ten grand.
So that's, if you go in this direction, that's also something that you're gonna be giving up, so when we do the revenue forecast, we've got to understand that there's a subtraction when you move to a state-administered system. Now, the question is, why would the city potentially go in this direction of a state, of a state slash local option tax route? Number one, it's because it could be used to provide the city with a new source of revenue, which could, among other things, fund services, although I wouldn't recommend that, as a former select board member. But it also can be used to make additional investments to the already substantial amount of investments that you've done through tax increment financing, plans for infrastructure and amenities. Actually, this is a logical extension of what you've done with TIF, to bring a new source of revenue in, to continue with the progress that you've made, and it's impressive what you've made. I've lived in Vermont a long time, and I've been up here a lot, running the SAP run and those kinds of things, and what you've done with your downtown, in terms of your infrastructure investments and amenities. I had the pleasure of parking in the parking garage this evening when I came in, because I wanted to, well, I was involved with the state when we reviewed your taxing and the financing, I was the staff person for VEPSE at the time, and it's nice to come in and actually see something that happened when you sat there and you looked at the plans and reviewed the plans on behalf of the state. The interesting thing is, is that, you know, there's a natural inclination by someone like me to not actually be in favor of a local option tax, and be somewhat philosophically opposed to it. There will be guaranteed some philosophical opposition if you decide to go forward with a local option tax. And, but in a situation where you are, where you're employment center, where you have a substantial day population, you're also an endpoint for visits from, from travel and tourism market, people come to the downtown, come to events. Part of the reason for doing this is, it's a way to spread the public costs of providing the infrastructure and the amenities that attract people, allow people to work here, people to come and patronize your establishments, it's a way of getting them to make an actual tangible contribution directly. They always do it indirectly when they patronize the business and support the health of that business, so they can pay the property taxes that you collect, but this is another way to, again, make a tangible direct contribution towards the public costs of providing those, that infrastructure and those amenities to the people who come and visit. I mean, it's a substantial daytime population that you have from your work. I mean, it's a substantial daytime population that you have from your workers and from the people that come to recreate or to, you know, patronize the eating and drinking establishments in town. As I said earlier, here's the principle of dividing the responsibilities for this between the levels of government that do things well. That's your sidewalk sweeper, huh? Don't register. That's impressive, too. I come from the town of Essex. We don't have that. We never had that. And I would say that even though philosophically you can be a little uncomfortable with a local option tax, the experience across the state has been that this has been used by a number of municipalities to accomplish all the things that we talked about up above with very little economic disruption. There's always opposition, there's always concern about what about the businesses that are gonna be part of this that piggyback? When you think about a 1% option tax, a $50 restaurant bill increases by 50 cents. A $100 overnight stay increases by a dollar. As an economist, you increase the cost of something, you always have some kind of impact on things, but it's hard for me to believe that people are gonna materially alter their plans for a dollar on $100 or 50 cents on $50. And that's been the experience, and that's why so many, I think, communities around the state have done this. Now, the local option tax is authorized under state statute. The statute allows the 1% tax to be piggybacked on the existing state taxes for things like sales, subject to all the exclusions and all the inclusions that are in state statute, and on meals, rooms, and alcohol sales. It's a destination basis, okay? So it's assessed on people who consume and take possession of what they consume here. If a St. Albans resident goes to Fairfield or to Essex to have a restaurant meal, they don't owe anything because they take possession of that, whatever they consume outside of the city of St. Albans. So that's the important thing. Things like clothing are excluded, just like they are on the state level. But all sorts of other things are included that you wanna think about. Utilities, bills are assessed 1%, cable bills are assessed 1%. On top of all the things that are subject to the sales and use tax, and we're expanding the sales and use tax. There's now, because of the Wayfair decision in Supreme Court last year, there's an awful lot of e-commerce. Amazon and Amazon affiliates have to collect and remit sales tax to the state. And the meals and rooms tax now, things like the establishments that, you know, that are a part of the e-commerce resulted, I'm trying to say Homeward Bound and
VRB.
Airbnb, those kinds of things are now all subject. Sorter rentals are now all subject to the state meals and rooms tax, and you would be piggybacking on that as well. So, you know, the consumption function has gotten away from just tangible goods things, and we're now taxing these e-commerce transactions and these things that are outside in the meals and rooms tax, outside of traditional hotel overnight states. And you have a hotel, you own an equity, so you can own a hotel. And that would be covered by a local option meals and rooms tax.
Jeff, just to clarify, so any Amazon purchase would be included?
Well, it depends. Yes, if it's received by somebody who lives in town, it would be subject to the, it's subject to the state sales tax and it'd be subject to the local option tax if you decide to go in that direction. Okay? People who are Amazon affiliates would also be operating who sell to people in town, not the products they sell to somebody in Fairfield, but the somebody in the city would be responsible for collecting and remitting that to the state, which would then go back to the city if you were to, if you were to go in that direction. Now, here's my typo. It's more municipalities than fifteen, it's, I think it's sixteen, of which fourteen are administered through the state taxes. Town of St. Albans implemented in July 2014 its local option sales tax, meals, rooms, and alcohol tax. An interesting thing, Killington, the town of Killington had a sales tax. They rescinded it, but three months later imposed a local option meals, rooms, and alcohol tax. So the town of Killington is the only one I know that imposed a state sales tax and then rescinded it. I don't know of any other communities that, since they got the legislative, state authorization to do this, has actually rescinded it. A total of nineteen municipalities across the state imposed a local tax on meals, rooms, and alcohol beverages. And what I do is I have a map that I share with everyone on it. This is how I realized that I counted them wrong. I had one of my best staff members check me, and he said, "Why don't I build a map for everybody?" And the Greens are the communities that, that, oops, that assess both. And the Blues are the ones that only assess the local option meals, rooms, and alcohol tax. And you can see that everybody closer to the New Hampshire border but Rattleboro only has the meals, rooms, and alcohol tax. They stayed away from the sales and use tax. And all the people on the western side of the state where they don't have a border condition with a state that has a zero sales and use tax have imposed a local option sales and use tax. And a total of six of those communities, the communities in blue. Interestingly, City Barrett just recently imposed a local option meals, rooms, and alcohol tax and to help basically with their sidewalks. Or at least that's what they said. Now, the process to collect it is, I just wanna give you kind of like an overview of it. The state collects its meals and rooms and alcohol tax and sales tax. They also collect use on a one-monthly basis. So when you have sale, taxable sale between December 1st and December 31st, they, the people who collect it are, have a deadline to remit it for the monthly filers by the 25th of the following month of January. People are grouped into monthly filers and quarterly filers based on the amount of sales they have and the tax that they remit. The majority, overwhelming majority of the money comes to the state via monthly filers. When you go to the local option tax, basically what happens is, is the local payers collect the 1% and piggyback on the state's 6% or the 9, 10, and the meals, rooms, and alcohol tax. They add one percentage point. They actually file two documents, most of them write only one check, and they send it in the following month. Now, the state takes the money that comes into the local option tax and breaks it into two parts. Seventy percent is remitted back to the community, in this case to the city. And it does it one month after the month that it collects. So for October, November, and December, the money comes in from those three months and is collected and is collected by January 25th. But it turns around and then it takes to February for the state to send your money to you. So you will be getting money in February, if you go down this road, for what happened in October, November, and December. For January, February, and March, you'll be getting your money in May. The people will be sending it in by April. And for, obviously, for April, May, and June, the money will come into the state by July, although they take it every month. And then you'll be getting your money in August, and it keeps rolling that way. And so that's basically the way, the way that that works. Now, because I know that it's not something that, you know, you flexibly, you would say yes, I wanted to raise a couple of pros and also provide some con, if you would like to go forward with this. Possible pro is, as Dom, I think, said in one of the memos that he sent to you as a Shiretown Center, makes sense towards helping the people that use your infrastructure and your amenities to actually make a direct payment over and beyond the indirect payment that they do by supporting the businesses and keeping them healthy. If it's dedicated to capacity building efforts like support investments in additional infrastructure and amenities, offers a relatively economically unintrusive way to raise money to support those efforts and to keep them going. If you use the local vote approach, you'll know whether the majority of your citizens support this and then you have to make the decision, you know, if you warn it, if the public wants it, you run the risk that you might get some opposition from the people that it affects who have to raise, collect 1% more from the people who patronize their businesses. And some of them won't like it, some will be okay with it, others won't. And as I said earlier, using the state administrative system, so you can minimize your administrative costs. Now, the possible cons are, you're gonna raise the cost for the taxable sales for the things that you cover with the local option tax. Likely be opposed by some merchants. And the discourse alone, talking about a local option tax is gonna send a message out there if you decide to, you know, put this measure on the, and warn it for town meeting. You're gonna have to have an information campaign, you're gonna have to engage stakeholders, and you're gonna have to explain it to the voters. And just by virtue of that, you'll be sending a message to at least some of your voters that this may not be affordable, and I don't know if I like this. The effort could fail. You could put it out to a vote and the voters could say no. In which case, you paid your high-priced consultant a lot of money to figure it out for you, and your staff spent a lot of time trying to figure this out, and you don't get any return for that. It could fail. As part of the charter change, you're gonna have to give up the authority that you have and you've had for a really long time. And while it hasn't been utilized that much, you haven't collected a lot of money, you still have the authority to issue plenty of these taxes already. And this is the one that I don't think is a major thing, but it could happen. Sales taxes, meals, rooms, and alcohol taxes, the state likes to think it's exclusive purview of that. Now, it's given communities, municipalities, the opportunity to do this. And stranger things have happened. The state could change its mind. And you could've done a lot of things in anticipation of this revenue, and then your taxpayers would be on the hook. If you took out some debt to fund infrastructure investments or something like that, then your taxpayers are still on the hook because you took out the debt and all of a sudden your source is lost because the state changes its mind. I don't think it's a big thing, but it's something that you have to weigh.
Jeff, that's a good question about that. Isn't it, in full disclosure, I represent the city of St. Albans, a part of the town in the General Assembly. Isn't it more likely that the state would basically say, "If you haven't done it already, we're not allowing any more towns to do this?"
That would be step one. That would be step one. Step two would be, "We're gonna give you ten years to get off the lien exception." And if you took out a 20-year low, no, to fund some infrastructure with anticipation of local option tax revenue, you might have a gap between how much farther your local option tax revenue goes versus what you've gotta pay down for debt service.
But I'll think being, well, I mean, isn't that an argument in favor of doing it now while we still can?
That's a value judgment that I'm not in a position to make. You know, there's an awful lot of communities that are doing this. The more communities that do it, at some point in time, it might signal to the people that sit on the various money committees that they gotta stop it. That certainly was, that certainly has been the paradigm on TIFs. That you got in at a generation of TIFs that if you were to go in now, I don't think they'd like to deal as much as the one that you got. Because the state changed it because they were concerned that, some of the folks on the money committees were concerned that it's costing the education fund too much to stabilize evaluations and property tax flow for a period of time for communities wanting to get involved in TIF discussions. I sit there all the time and I hear it all the time. It's now part of the emergency board analysis every January, an estimate of the TIF district value and how much has been, how much value has been created and excluded from the education grant list for educational tax purposes. And it's a, it's a point of discussion at every emergency board meeting now, and it has been for, it started last year. So you're right, there is a, I don't wanna quote a slipper slope, but there will be some, potentially some objective creep here. The more popular these things become, the more likely that the state will freeze them and maybe, you know, sunset them, etc. So you gotta think of, you need to think long-term about this, particularly if you go down the road towards using these funds to provide debt service on loans, to support capacity building in your downtown and infrastructure. That's one option. I mean, in a lot of cases, the vote hinges on not whether you're gonna levy such a tax of local option sales tax or local option meals, rooms, or alcohol tax, but what use are you gonna make from the revenues that come from it? And is that worthy of the increase, the 1% increase that it's gonna be experienced by some businesses in the community? And in a lot of cases, that's the thing that drives the debate and drives the decision on the efficacy of doing this and the, and the community vote. And as a chair and as stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, I mean, that's your fiduciary responsibility as councilmembers. Okay, so some key considerations for you to assess. We need to do a more in-depth estimated revenue potential. What I talked a little bit about earlier, we now have this master list of businesses that could be impacted by it. We feel like the tax department, the Vermont Department of Taxes, both city staff and I have talked to them. They're willing to look at their database and make sure that they've bifurcated the businesses who are paying, who would pay this tax properly. There's three hundred and some odd businesses, something like that, I think, in the master list, oops, in the master list that we have developed. And so if you decided that you wanted to get more information on this for further consideration, we would submit that to the state and ask them to double-check their delineations between the town and the city in terms of which business is which and which one will be covered under the state local option sales tax and what will be considered under meals, rooms, and alcohol tax. Then it would be up to you to decide one or the other or both. If you wanted to take this a step further to develop the language for the charter change. As I said earlier, important decision is, most communities, Williston is one of the exceptions, which is where my, my business is, don't use these funds to fund general city or community expenditures. They use them for specific purposes like roads and sidewalks or stormwater or something like that. They, they try to bifurc, so that, these taxes can go up and down with the economy, not surprisingly. They're consumption taxes. And so if you were to build that into the budget and we get into an economic situation where they were adversely impacted, you could find yourself with services increases and not enough money to support it because the sales tax goes down because people pull their spending in a little bit when they get uncomfortable about the state of the economy. And, you know, we're at a record, you know, in terms of the length of the expansion. The expansion is mature. I absolutely guarantee you, we will have an economic downturn at some point in time in the future. We're just arguing about the timing. And, you know, there's a variety of options there. You could say that the policy is pay-go to fund infrastructure and amenity development. Use the money for debt service and issue debt to support infrastructure investment and amenity development. You can use a little bit of both, those kinds of things. Those are the things that just made sense when I said, when I talked it over with Dom and I said, "Well, you know, what do you think the city council would be interested in?" And as a former select board member, I couldn't sit here and say to you, "You should just use it for city services" and not earmark it for something that builds your capacity. If you're gonna take this money out of the economy, use it to build the capacity for you to get even more business activity and therefore support the budget of the community. And obviously, if you decide to take another step towards going down the road, towards developing perhaps charter change language, you're gonna have to engage with stakeholders in the community age-early, because maybe watching my presentation tonight will encourage some folks who would be affected to start contacting you. And so it's good to get out in front of it, and communication will be key. Now, you know, I kinda sat there and I said, "If I was sitting in your place, what would I wanna do?" And so we took the case of giving you some initial numbers, these are order of magnitude- These are order of magnitude, subject to further development. You know, there were some issues with the numbers when we looked at it. You know, there's, there's not a lot of activity being reported in rooms, even though you get a new hotel in town, and that kind of thing. So we've got to sort through some of these, some of the issues. But it looks to us, looking at the last two years, using the data that's published on the Tax Department site, that if you had a 1% meals rooms and alcohol tax in place in fiscal year 2018, would have produced 162,000 bucks. If you had it in 19, and that's the year ended June 30th, you would have had about 171,000 bucks come in under meals rooms and alcohol tax. If you had a sales tax, the numbers are a little bit bigger because, you know, you are a place where people come to shop. In 18, it would have been a little over 615,000, and in 19, it would have been about 680,000 dollars. And so we sat there, and we said to ourselves, what's the maximum potential that that kind of amount of revenue could lever? And we were, we noticed the agenda. They had a 1.75 interest rate on something. So if you took, and took that out for 20 years at a 175 interest rate, this kind of money here, without thinking how it might grow in the future, and how you might size something, or how you might creep up incrementally over time, a 1.75 interest could leverage 13 million in debt issuance. And in 19, it's close to 14. At 2.5% over 20 years, in 18, 12. In 19, 13. And then at 3.5% interest, because at some point in time, interest rates are going to go up, and you might do something five years from now, and that might be your interest rate through the bond bank, or wherever you might, you know, issue some debt, it's 11 to 12. So somewhere between 11 and 14 million dollars if you just use the money that comes from these taxes to support debt service for taking out, for issuing debt to boost infrastructure or fund some amenity development. And so I just wanted to give you a sense that it's a little bit bigger than a breadbox. It's a, it's a pretty good amount of money where you could do something meaningful with it. And like I said, it's entirely up to you. You could tell me, don't do it anymore. Tell me through Dom, you don't want me to do it anymore. Or you can say, let's have, let's do the next layer of research and analysis, and come back to you in a month to report on where we are with that. And without it, I'd take any questions. And I don't know if I'm, did I go over my time a little bit?
Oh, you are.
I do that. I'm very excited when I do this kind of stuff because this is really interesting, fascinating stuff.
We structured your bill that way. Remember, it goes down to a line?
Oh, right, 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 right. But it's every half hour I go over that.
That's true.
So with that, if anybody has any questions, I'd be delighted to answer them. If I can't, I'll research them and get back.
I'd like to point out your, your timeline's on the back.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I have a, I do have a timeline to town meeting day that I didn't cover. I was trying to get at it, I guess, easy. And my thought process is, is through mid-December, we do some more analysis if the council wants that to refine some of the things that we talked about, do the additional research, and confirm, for example, the list of all payers, and refine the revenue estimates. If at that point in time, you say, let's take the next step, then we do things like go to the city attorney and get draft charter change language. That would be needed. To warn something for town meeting, obviously, the warning has to happen by the end of January, I think no later than the 3rd of February, which I think is a Sunday, so that's hard to do. But, you know, if they have the warning done by the, by the end of January, beginning of February, and then we have to talk to the community about what this is all about, what the ramifications are, what are the pros and cons, and those kinds of things. And if you have a successful town meeting vote, then it's got to go to the legislature. And they're pretty good about acting on something like this. So the feeling is, is that if there was an affirmative vote on town meeting day in the city for this, we could probably get the charter change adopted next session. And if you wanted to, you could even have this happen July 1st of 2020, which would be the 2021 fiscal year for the state. Or if you wanted to give the businesses in the community some, and some people have done this, the ability to kind of absorb it all, you could have it be effective October 1st, in which case you'd get nine months, or eight months, because it's lagged one month. You get eight months for the revenue first year, and you just have to, you know, recognize that if you have it for a partial year, you're not going to get these kinds of, these are, those were annual numbers, and that was in place for 12 months. And so the first year, at the minimum, you're only going to get 11. But if you start it later in the year, you're going to get less than that. So that's pretty much what's involved. This could happen fast, or it could happen on another timeline, depending upon what the council's pleasure is. Or tell me thanks, stop now.
I'll tell you thanks, Jeff. So thank you for that overview. Does anyone have any questions of Jeff?
And if you have questions, you can relay them through Dom. We'll get to them if you think of something on the way home.
So just out of curiosity, what is the next level of research? What would that entail?
Yeah, we would ref, we would start to develop the parameters of what makes sense for the city based on any guidance from you. We would submit the list of businesses that we think would be affected by each one of the taxes to the Tax Department. They would come back to us and tell us what the taxable receipts are, so we could get more specific about and test whether or not the order of magnitude numbers that we've provided make sense. And then we could do analysis based on what the council wants. Do you want to have page go for anything? How do you want to use it? Do you want to use it to fund services? That's an allowed use? You tell us. And then, but if you say, no, we want to invest in our future, and we want to do it through issuing debt, and this would be debt service only, we could start to refine those analyses to tell you how much that you could lever. And obviously, we're just looking with broad strokes here. You wouldn't issue all the debt in one year. You would issue it progressively. We'd think about what it is that you'd want to do, put it on the schedule, and get real about the financial analysis.
I think just at the staff level, a couple of things. In our thinking, we've envisioned it as being primarily a debt service program as a way to distribute that burden also just to the taxpayers and the whole shot kind of thing, as I mentioned in my original memo. But it was entirely in our mind to be focused on capital projects and providing another revenue source to service the debts. And, you know, just for some comparison here, the TIF has grand numbers, TIF's 20 million. This is about half that in terms of what it could support. Looking at, I guess it's not down.
We could back up. Well, I can do it.
You know, one of the things that might be interesting also is to, is to take a look at some of those same levels of capital spending, and to imagine what, if we put that on the property tax, what that would do.
That's true.
You know, we've, and, and and we bring it up, and just looking at the tax rate and where it's at, and that's, we're approaching a buck. And at the same time, we've got goals and objectives that continue to identify large capital projects that we want to do.
What's the penny in your grandmas?
40 grand or something?
About 40, yeah. Well, it's going to be 20 cents.
Just think that 750,000 dollars translates through to your grandmas.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a game changer.
In my community, it's about 120,000 bucks penny in the grandmas. And with you, it would.
Yeah.
Any questions for Jeff?
Yeah, Jeff, you're good. Okay, thanks, Jeff.
You can keep me here. I don't want to get in my car right now.
It's clean, though. You don't have to rush it off.
It is, it's in the garage. Thank you for everything, Jeff.
Thank you. So Dom, you're looking, do we want to move forward with this? Take the next step? Or do we call it quits here? You're looking for some direction from us?
Yeah, you don't have to give me direction now. I think there's a lot of, I think this, Jeff's task was to refine the numbers and help us dial that in. And then there's a whole other body of work around, what are the type of things that we would spend that on? And how do we, oh, you know, the big, the big driver is the sales tax. That's where the real money is. It's a different set of impacts on the general sales tax versus meals rooms and alcohol.
But I would reinforce, if we want to make something happen for the next fiscal year, the timeline is tight.
Yeah, I think it's tight, but it's not unlike, you know, for some perspective here. We called a, we called a special meeting a couple of years ago, and had a special bond vote for a $13 million parking garage in September. This feels like it's well within our wheelhouse to make a compelling case to the voters about how this continues, the type of investments that they've seen over the last five years. And unlike other initiatives, this is one that has other people paying in. I sense some hesitation, though, amongst the council level. It might be worth, there gets some discussion going on at least.
Yeah, I, personally, I'm, I'm fine with having Jeff take the next step. That's just me. I'm curious to get the feeling around the table that are people thinking, no, let's not go that, and we're, it's a, have concerns. So I guess I'm looking for some feedback here. Do we want to take, have Jeff move forward? Or do we want to sort of discuss it moving forward in the next meeting? Or how do we want to handle it?
What kind of investment are we making to have Jeff take the next step?
It's not a lot of money. Jeff's good at being tongue-in-cheek and cultivating a sense of humility, but he's one of the best bargains out there. It, it, you know, it's within our existing professional services. Why not, you know, that, that, you know, but some of the other projects that we've been talking about, you know, we have to deal with the pool. We have to, this neighborhood sidewalks. We've got Fonda. And the effort that we've played in driving economic development, this provides another source of funds where the city can continue to be the driver of economic development in the city.
So for me, I would want to move forward and take the next step. But in terms of how, how we talk about this with folks in the city, especially business people, I really think it's got to be a balance between continuing to make those investments that drive economic activity, the things that Dom just mentioned, but also making sure that we're holding line on that municipal tax rate. I mean, I think that's the opportunity to do both of those things at the same time is the reason to do it. And if we lean too far in one direction or the other, I think we're doing it a service to people if we do decide to move forward, and the voters decide to move forward with it. I think it's really got to be, we have to balance, balance that and keeping that municipal tax rate from continuing to creep up as we make investments. And continuing to be able to make those investments is the argument for doing. But we need to talk to people about it.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we're,
There's time to, and there's time to do it.
There's time to do that. But, you know, what if you had a budget proposal that had the tax rate, knows an increase in the tax rate, and some popular capital projects service by the local option tax?
That's very attractive.
I think that's a good narrative.
Yeah.
You know, from my, my perspective, you know, I agree with Jeff. I don't think, I don't think an additional 1% is going to deter any activity. I mean,
Some people think we already have it because the town has it. I mean, are people really not shopping?
No, I mean, that's my, that's my question. Who does not go to Williston because they have a 1% local option tax? Who doesn't go to Burlington to shop because of a 1%? I don't know that anyone, it's a deterrent for anyone to do that. I'm sure we would hear from business, but I would really push back to say that I do not believe it's a deterrent whatsoever. Especially when you have 16 other communities doing it.
We said that about parking meters.
Which part?
We said that about parking meters. It wouldn't deter people from coming downtown. We said that about paying for parking. It wouldn't deter people from coming downtown. We got a lot, we got a lot of pushback on it. I guess I'm not in favor, I guess I'm in favor of moving ahead with the next step. Like, I agree with Mike. We're on step two. We've got about 20 steps to go.
And I would, I would share that ultimately it's the voter's decision. I mean, we can present, we can present our case, but ultimately, it's going to go up and go over.
They're going to, they're going to rely on us to do the proper investigation.
No, I get that.
And counsel them on what to do.
And I don't, I don't want to feel rushed.
Yeah.
That's my thing right now, is I'm thinking, you know, Jeff, like, oh, we can make this happen. I just don't want to feel rushed. I want to listen to everybody and hear what they have to say, and hear their concerns, hear their pros. Just don't want to try to jam this through. If it's not ready, then it's just not ready.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm good with some more investigation into it.
Mary?
I have to investigate it personally.
So can I get a motion on that? And?
Need one?
You don't need one.
Don't you, really?
We got enough. I got a sense of where the council's at.
Okay.
You know, I guess just in closing, what we're talking about here is diversifying our revenues revenues and trying to reduce reliance on the property tax. That's the ballgame, is getting off the reliance on the property tax. Because that's...
Well, I would reinforce Michael's comment that, you know, we need to maintain, if we're going to do both, we need to make sure we stabilize that property tax moving forward.
I don't want to become too reliant on that either, because I know what happened in Williston. They got in a whole lot of trouble because they couldn't pay the things they needed to pay because they relied on it so heavy.
Sure. One of the things I would also, you know, the Tiff has about 15 years left on it, and then all of a sudden, every, you know, the million two on our $8 million budget that's gone to servicing the debt, about 40% of that frees up in capacity within our budget. So that's a significant amount of capacity that's out there that would be unrestricted in the event that this funding source became less dependable. I don't think that cliff is upon us. I think that that's a few years out before the legislature takes action. You know, my sentiments are, what you voiced, Mike, that the legislature, I think, is going to ratchet this down like they ratcheted Tiff down, which is, I'm not trying to create a sense of urgency, Jay, that things are well taken, but the... We've done well as a community by sensing the opportunities, reading the winds on the water and getting ready, getting out in front, and beating other communities to the punch. This is another effort in that same vein.
Jeff, any final comments? Dom, you're set.
I'm good.
Jeff, thanks again for coming in.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Drive safe. Okay, Mr. Manhan, would you like to come forth? And I'd like to point out that we have all noticed the plow truck and the sidewalk plow going by, so you can...
I told them to make sure...
You can call them off now if you want.
I told them to make sure to do the loop until they sell the lights go off in the council room.
Thanks for coming in, Marty. You want to give an operations report?
Yeah, we've been busy the last couple of weeks, obviously with the flood. Last week, the guys were busy taking care of all that. At the same time, they were putting in a new water line out on Rouge Drive. We had a section, we had replaced everything from the plant up to about the drive-in to the solar panels on Rouge Drive last year. And in the last... Since we did that, we've had five leaks on the section that we didn't replace. So we looked at replacing that line going up to the eight-inch line under Route 7, and it was going to be about a $50,000 endeavor. And Walter Kane and Troy Baker got together and looked at it and ended up tying into the 10-inch line that went behind Hungeford's. We got an easement from Tom Hungeford to connect to that line. So they did that work last week and finished that and came well below that $50,000 mark. Got all our snow equipment ready to go. We have one plow, one sidewalk plow that we're waiting on parts. And as we were preparing for today's snowstorm, we had a leak on our 20-inch... He didn't get the text. 20-inch line down on Lower Newton. Nice video here, if you want to...
Oh, my God. Guys are making some snow.
So that was about 12:30 this afternoon.
Wow.
Marty, that seems like an odd spot for a leak to me.
It's just, it's had a hole in the pipe. I mean, there's no rhyme or reason, but...
Doesn't appear to be that deep, does it?
The line, the line was probably six and a half, seven feet deep. But they got it shut down and everything and got the wrap on it, and the wrap failed, so they had to go get another wrap. So hopefully, I just sent a text out to those guys for an update. I think they're still dealing with that, but the same crew will come in, dry off, and head out in the plow trucks for the rest of the day. But we're fortunate. We've got, and I've said it time and time again, but these guys go above and beyond on a daily basis. Brian let down at the sewer plant, same thing with that situation we had the other day. If he wasn't there, we would have been in real trouble. But we've got a good crew and...
How long has that crew been together?
A little over two years now. This is... This crew has been... Previous to that, we went through three crews in seven years, so... I mean, it's interesting to watch them work. They all know what each other's thinking and know what tools they need and stuff, so... But other than that, it's staying on task and waiting for snow to stop falling. It's supposed to be 45 degrees next week, so...
Marty, I had a couple of things for you. Can you elaborate on parking ban for tonight?
So our typical parking ban doesn't go into effect until December 1st anyway, so we wouldn't be in it now. We didn't issue an emergency parking ban. We aren't going to tow any cars or anything. We will go around them this evening typically. They'll move within the next 24 hours. We'll be out there again tomorrow cleaning up and stuff. Depending on how much snow we get and what the forecast looks like, we may end up removing snow downtown Thursday night. And again, we can probably work around any cars that are going to be out there. We mentioned at the last meeting, we're going to investigate looking at the beacons and stuff, and we've looked at a couple of different models, but at this point, we're probably going to move into our old parking ban on December 1st like we normally would and then just issue warnings and work around that if we aren't able to get those lights in. The other thing I'd touch on is all the lights in the park are now working. They put in additional lights on the monuments and the flag, so if you go through there at night, it certainly makes a difference there. So that was completed last week, all that work, so...
I would also thank you for pushing the repairs on Aldis Street on the railroad tracks. Big improvement there as well.
And we're hoping to get that other pavement done this year. The plant in Swanton closed last Friday. The plant in Burlington will be open until December 1st, but at this point, we'll probably... It's good enough. We'll probably end up touching that area up next spring when we do our regular paving and stuff.
Anyone have any questions for Marty?
There's some development going on. I think it's Tyler down on Lake Street. That road's been out of operation there for a while. Is he going to get that paved up or what?
They're supposed to put the second lift in tomorrow, according to Jimmy Hungeford, is his contractor. He wanted to do it in one lift, and they did that on Kingman Street, and you can see what happened there. So we requested that they do it in two lifts to allow that first lift to settle and then come back in with the second lift. I spoke to Jimmy last week, and he was planning on doing it tomorrow. I don't know with the weather now if he'll be able to, but he'll definitely get it done before.
Yeah, next week it is going to warm up. It'll be before December 1st.
They... The town, or rather GW Tatro put in the NutriBlend line, and they paved their spots today, so... But yeah, Jimmy, I'm not worried about... He'll take care of that, so...
The last thing is, are these folks going to continue over here or what's going on?
Across the road?
Yeah.
Yep, they started forming the foundation, the footing to the foundation today.
When are they stopping? Are they going to stop at all?
No.
No?
No. The plan is to go through, work through the winter. The utilities will probably wait till spring, but the foundations and the buildings will go on.
Have both buildings?
Residential, yeah, and commercial.
Anyone else have questions for Marty? Marty, thank you for everything.
All righty. Thank you.
Marty, thank you for getting the graffiti off of the wall up at the entrance. All this is still up there. That looks... It's like it never happened.
That was... I'd like to take credit, but that Matt Moherin, and when we had the other graffiti throughout downtown, he was out at the very next day, and without being asked, just responds to it.
He's becoming an expert on graffiti removal.
But it's indicative of everybody throughout the city. They all work together and help each other out and do what needs to get done, so...
Wow, yeah, that's amazing. It's like it never happened.
Yeah, I'll pass that along to him.
Enjoy your evening.
Yes, thank you. Well, two pleasures, we go bye.
Dom, moving on to you.
Yeah, I can be quick. So Congress Main Development across the street, we sold the land for Unit 2 to Grant and his partners, so that's a huge milestone. That shifts a lot of the... We shift the steel rising next month in the commercial building of Main Street there. The podium, which supports the two residential buildings on the back, is our responsibility in that it is occurring currently. The... So the delivery date for the podium is now estimated early February. We envision closing for two residential units for that probably early in the new year. So we're on track. Just got an email as we were talking here about another tenant who's interested in signing a letter of intent for the first floor, so we now have letters of intent for the whole first floor.
Nice.
You're talking housing or retail?
Commercial building.
Commercial. Oh, yeah.
Trash hauling, we got a question about how we're going to roll this out. We sent... Have we sent those letters out, Chris?
Right.
Okay. We got letters coming out to the haulers, introducing, reintroducing the originators, telling them to apply and get, tell us how many stickers they want, and we'll send them out. We envision going live January 1, and in terms of rollout with the citizens, we envision a three-month end to your education for refunds or three warnings, which comes first. So that's a sub-vision of the direction from the council, but that's one of the questions we have in meetings. I tend to educate folks, and I think that might be a pretty simple way to do so. 2019 goals and objectives. I'm sure I updated these. I forgot to update today, so I could update that manual in November 11 this evening. I know we did spend a lot of time on it, but we're making some good progress and checking off the items on this, because there are a few that are ongoing. So just to let you know, continuing to use this as our playbook and our set the guide to those boards. And then finally, the...
Just a question on that. So last year, I think we met on this to originate the list right about this time of year.
I was trying to remember, was it this time of year?
Yeah, I think after, just after Thanksgiving, I think we met.
Yeah.
Or just before. So will you be seeing if we can pull one together just to reevaluate?
Yeah, the... Let's connect on that. Let's look at this list and see. That was a good time to do it because of the turnover in the offices. I'm not sure that's the best time to do it with our general process. We'll derive the annual budget, but I'm pretty glad we got together to do this. Lastly, the FY '20 budget, the process we usually follow for that is Tom and I try to get it done right around Christmas, and then meet with the finance committee in early January, and route to the council then, typically in that first meeting in January. We're inclined to follow this similar process this year. Waiting to that point allows us to have some really good data about what our actuals are this year. We're almost at six months of actuals, but so that's the plan. I take any questions on any of that. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. So under my... Everyone had a proclamation in your packet. This is something that came through Chip. I mentioned it at the last meeting that you'd be seeing it.
It's a freshie.
Fairly straightforward. Anyone have any questions on it or comments? Here I am, and I would entertain a motion that I sign it.
Zoomed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Check my mic. Any questions? So it's basically a Human Rights Day proclamation for 2019. Chip, do you remember, didn't have a... The date is December 10th, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So we will proclaim December 10th, Human Rights Day proclamation, and that goes with many others across the country. Just an update on the mayor's report. We talked about goals meeting. Just curious, who's up for election in March besides me?
I'm Ian Murray.
Murray and Mike. Have you decided what your... Can you go public with your decision?
I can sign. How will we try and enter?
That's... Seemed to be some firm commitment there, Murray. And Mike, what are your thoughts?
I will also be seeking reelection. I should probably warn Stephanie about that, but yeah, I do fantasy reelection.
This live tonight or no?
Probably.
Okay. As far as I know, I am running myself as well, so...
Duffy?
Duffy, I don't know. He's doing some outreach to see what his constituents think, and he is going to make that decision at a later time.
Yeah, they're last polls. Any of them official voting age?
A couple of things I had. I was going to mention park lighting, looks great. I thought they did a wonderful job on that, and thank you. We... I think most everyone was at the ceremony today in the park. It went off very well. I thank John Coffey and Craig Cattell for their work at the city school to pull that off. I thought the student speakers were excellent. The high school student did a wonderful job. They all did a wonderful job, but the high school student, based on her personal interaction with her father and whatnot, I thought that was excellent, so... We have a building that we own that was torn down on LaSalle Street. We have... I've talked to it with a couple council persons, and we'd like to see if, Dom, you want to give some thought to maybe a pocket park?
Sure.
In that area as opposed to building another house there?
Yeah.
In conversation with Chad and others, I think something in the line for toddler, zero to seven age, mothers, mothers and toddlers type of thing. I'd also like to have some input when the time comes for the sidewalk and maybe that whole area is wooded and could probably be cleaned up quite a bit if we're going to go disroof with a pocket park. So I think there's some investment that can be made in that area of town and optimistic with the purchase of Colony Square as well, so I think if that's something you could entertain for the budget, that'd be great. See what that impact might be.
The exit where you get off from, where you get off from Burlington, head north onto the interstate, they cleaned up that little circle right there, the trees, and it's all open now. That looks... It changed everything there, so it'd be... I don't know who owns that little chunk of property, but if we could clean up some of it so there's not so much underbrush, I think it'd be a huge improvement in that neighborhood.
And then the sidewalk connecting around to Pine Street.
Yeah, they left all the big trees, it just cleaned up so you can actually, you can see through it. It looks really good.
I think we can do... I think for a little amount of money, we can clean that sort of block up if you want to take a look at that.
Sure.
Are you considering putting a sidewalk on that side of the street?
That was going to be my suggestion. I know that we have a long ways to go in that discussion, but I think there's, I think there's definitely potential to swing back around on the north side of Pine and connect to that sidewalk.
Right, yeah. Yeah, because there's nothing there now.
Nothing else. So as Chad said, I don't know who owns that parcel, but it'd be interesting to have a conversation there or parcels.
Yeah, we can look into that.
Thank you goes out to Chief Taylor for, I think, chief initiated the posters that we have for our service members and where they're working in the city. I know it's here, I've seen it at other buildings, Public Works possibly.
Police Station.
Police Station as well. So I think that's a great addition.
Yeah.
So I think that was about...
Did it make it into the paper? I didn't see it.
Yes, it did.
I was going to say, I think that's where I saw it.
Tom said it did.
Pretty sure it did. I don't know what page it's on, but I think it's in today's.
Yeah. Oh, it is in today's. No, it's not in today's because there's no paper today.
There's no paper delivery today.
There's online.
There's a paper today.
You gotta know where to look.
Online thing, yeah, that's a minor point there.
Still some in the alleyway.
I'm surprised you don't have a football still, so...
I think that's all I had. So we'll go around the table. We'll start with Marie.
Yeah, I have nothing at this time for discussion. Things are quiet.
Chad?
I have nothing. Just thanks to the Public Works crew for being out there tonight. That's it. Nothing.
Kate?
I'm happy to be here.
Whoa, Michael.
I'm good. Been a busy day.
Tim, you're gonna... Nothing either?
No.
We're a boring bunch, aren't we?
You sure? Anyone? Nothing.
Thanks for speaking for the city tonight.
You're welcome.
Yeah, it was a great meeting. It's worth being a little cold for.
Okay, well, with that, we'll move on to warrants and minutes. So...
Proven warrants, 1018.
Second.
Another motion by Tim, second by Chad. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Motion for warrants, 111.
Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Chad. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes for 111.
Motion approved minutes, 101419.
Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Chad. Approval of minutes, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Special meeting, 103119.
Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Chad, approved minutes from the special meeting of 1031. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
I abstained.
Kate abstained. Okay. Anything else before we adjourn? Anyone? I'd like to extend one last thing, and that is many compliment of city staff, whether it's Curry's office or Kristen up there or Public Works or Marty. We get, I get tenfold more appreciative comments than any complaints, so I think I tout the team as being a great team, looking out for the interest of the city, and I think it's great to have all those people on board, and you as well, Dom.
Thank you. Good to be here.
Motion to adjourn?
Someone?
Second.
By Chad, second. All those in favor, aye.